My nice comfy chair. All right, why don't we get things fired up? It is 6:30. We have everybody in attendance, so I'm going to call the meeting order and declare a quorum, and ask everybody to join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Thanks to everybody who joined us for the retiree recognition earlier today, 5:30. Thanks to Terry Hicks, Ann Strout, Roberta Mazur, Annette Tines, Nancy Porter, Anne Ryan, and Paula Levitt. All of them are retiring from our district after as many as 30 years of service to our district. And I speak for the entire board when I thank them for that service. And just remind everybody that our district is great because the people who work here are great. So we really thank them for being a part of MSAD-15 for so long. We also have a couple of board members. This is their last meeting, so they're going to try to do lots of fancy stuff, I'm sure. Will Burrow and Megan Kenny, thank you guys for your service. Will, we had an abacus out. We think it's about 24 years that you were on the board.
Not quite. Maggie just checked. It was only 17.
No, I've been lying this whole time.
So have I.
It's not even two decades. Oh, my God. I feel as though I've been hyperbolic. I'm sorry. And Megan, finishing up, I think, a second term. And anybody who agrees to take over for Shad deserves high praise. So thank you very much for doing that when he quit on us. So. He did, yes. He quit his elected position. No shade, Shad. I know you have your reasons. Upcoming meetings. I want to remind everybody that the polls are open on Tuesday, June 13th, from 8:00 to 8:00 in the Newvegan Gym and from 6:00 to 8:00 at the fire station in New Gloucester. And amongst our municipal elections, there is also our budget to ratify. We thank everybody who came out to the town meeting in May to put that budget forward to the voters. And now we hope the voters agree with that town meeting, that it is the right budget for the upcoming school year. So we'll see you at the polls on Tuesday. And then I want to remind everybody that Wednesday, June 14th, we have another business meeting where we do validate those budget votes. And we welcome our new board members. And we have to elect a new chair and vice chair for next year, as we do every year. And after that, we'll have a nice summer, full of meetings. Are there any comments from the audience? Two minutes each, guys. I've seen you speak in public. Come on now. Someone has. No, all right. Let's, can I hear a motion on the minutes from the May 3 business meeting? Anyone?
I move that we accept the May 3 business meetings as written.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, any questions on those minutes? All in favor? All right. The town meeting from May 18.
I move we accept minutes from the town meeting, May 18.
Thank you very much. Can I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on those minutes?
Don't you like it how that works?
All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. We just recognized our retirees, but we have more recognition yet to do. Craig.
Congratulations to the newly inducted National Honor Society students. The National Honor Society Faculty Council selected these students based on scholarship, service, character.
And citizenship.
Thank you.
Did I staple the wrong direction wrong? Oh, jeez.
It was a little puzzled. And the students are Ellie Steele, Isabel Morales, Ella Brown, Marco Profano, Zach Stone, Luca Rossolino, Olivia Knudsen, Kaylee Wilkinson, and Kylie Tibodo. Congratulations to those students. It's not easy to get on the National Honor Society, so they really demonstrated their hard work and dedication to school.
Great. Okay, thank you, Craig. Let's move into new business. I have here on the agenda that we have our annual edition of the Hartwood Literary Magazine to pass out. I hope that is true. Keep trying again. He'll queue you up. Keep going.
Hello.
There we go.
Hello, school board. I'm, we are members of Hartwood Publishing Committee. This is actually our seventh year of putting together this beautiful collection of student work. In case you didn't know, Hartwood is a club dedicated for forming student art and writing they are proud of into a magazine they're able to enjoy and look at years from now. Each year, we like to dedicate the cover to an artist or artists that have submitted work we believe is above and beyond and should represent the book that year. This year, we have dedicated the cover to two very talented artists, Catherine Morris and Kylie Russell.
Each year, we also dedicate the book to one individual at our school. Last year, we did Sarah Gould. And this year, we decided to do Ray because he does everything for our school and cleans up everything and has to deal with angry teenagers all day and continues to keep a smile on his face. So, yeah.
Oh, thank you. Yes. It's for Dr. King and the school board. Feels like it might be Moby Dick. Oh, here we go. Look at that. Get that on camera. Very nice. Thank you, guys. We'll make sure everybody gets a copy on their way out. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks so much for coming, guys. This is really great. Appreciate it.
Did you notice it was in the wrong order?
I intend to. Okay, we have to hire some teachers here. First up is Erin Day. Can I hear a motion?
I move we approve Erin Day as a .6 time art teacher to the Dunn School to a second probationary contract.
Second. All right. Is Erin here or is someone presenting her?
So I'll present for Ms. Day. It's an unusual case. She and her husband moved to Maine, and they were here. And she applied for and interviewed and got the Dunn job last year. And earlier this spring, she and her husband had decided to move back to North Carolina. And so she resigned her job. And then a couple of months later, they said, we can't leave Maine. And so we'd already posted the job, so we.
Had to rehire her.
We, well, we did a search and we looked at all the applicants and we decided we would like her back. And so we're offering her for a second probationary contract.
Great. Anyone decides to stay in Maine must be smart. Any discussion? Yep?
The minutes say first.
There's been even more new agenda since then.
Okay. I thought I printed the most recent. Okay. Let me make sure. Second.
Maggie caught that, the last second. Sorry about that. All in favor? All right. Thanks so much. Next up is Tessa Benson.
I move we approve Tessa Benson, grade 2 teacher, to Memorial School to a first probationary contract for a one-year-only.
Second.
Hi, everybody. It's my pleasure to speak to you a little bit about Tessa Benson. Tessa is being nominated for our one-year-only second-grade teacher position at Memorial School. Tessa has an associate's degree in early childhood education from Central Maine Community College and a bachelor's degree in liberal studies with a minor in educational studies from University of Maine Augusta. Fun fact about Tessa, her most recent employment has been at Memorial School as an ed tech 2 in our supportive learning classroom. She's worked with us since August of 2020 while she's been working on her degree. She spent a lot of time in second-grade classrooms at Memorial School over her tenure. She's done a fantastic job working with our young learners, and she's been an asset to both the SLC team and Memorial School in general. Before Tessa came to Memorial, she worked at some different preschools in the area. Really can't say enough positive things about Tessa. She's flexible, she's hardworking, she's reliable, she's a team player. And we're just so excited to have her join us in this new capacity in the fall, pending your vote.
Great, thanks. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Great, that's great. It sounds like we grew our own teacher. That's excellent.
That's right.
All right. We should do more of that. All right. Next up is Ariana Demetralakis.
I move to approve Ariana Demetralakis, school counselor, high school, to a first probationary contract.
Second. All right. Come on up. We're two for two.
Good evening. I am very excited to be here to introduce. She goes by Ari. And well done on the last name.
I practiced.
As our school counselor at the high school. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree in communication from Eckerd College in Florida and then a master's degree from the University of Denver in school counseling. She recently completed or actually is finishing up currently at Casco Bay High School for her internship. And they could not say enough wonderful things. They actually wanted to create a position just to keep her. But we are very, very excited to have her on board. She also was an educator, an outdoor educator in California, and then at Ocean Park. So she comes with a variety of experiences, and we are very excited to have her on board.
Great. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Awesome. We've been trying to fill this position for a long time, so we're very happy you're here.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Rebecca Skelton.
I move we appoint Rebecca Skelton, grade 5 math and science teacher, to the middle school to a first probationary contract.
Second. Come on. That's all right. We like hearing from you regardless.
All right. Yeah, we're really excited to have Rebecca joining us. She has worked at Fuller Elementary School for the last eight years in North Conway. Really impressive references for her. Said she's one of those people that is always looking to improve, but not only to improve her own teaching, but to improve those around her. So she works really collaboratively with others. She served both with district and school leadership around math instruction. Is really focused on that. Makes great connections with both the staff and the students. And we are so lucky that her move from North Conway to Freeport is our benefit, and we're really looking forward to having her on board.
Great, thanks. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor? Excellent. Always good to grab a math and science teacher. All right, Jared Bishop.
I move to appoint Jared Bishop, grade 5 through 8 band teacher, middle school, to a first probationary contract.
Second.
Excellent. So Jared is here with me.
Great.
So Jared spent the last nine years at Buxton Center School, band and music there. Has also worked in Warren and Union in his career. Again, his references talked about his ability to, particularly to organize. He put on concerts for every grade level in the school individually and had the entire role of managing that, creating programs, managing families. And his supervisor could not say enough good things about him in that way. Extremely professional, collaborative, and is sort of a Pied Piper in the building. He likes to play music through the building so that it engages our students. And as we know, with the impact of COVID on many of our extra programs, we need people that are drawing that back in into our arts programs and even into our athletics. So we want those people drawing those students in. And we feel that Jared is the guy to make it happen for us.
Excellent. Thanks so much. And also, didn't even mention, you have kids in the district, right? Yes. Yeah. So always great. Wondering if it's going to be my own student now. Let you deal with that. That is your issue. Any other thoughts or questions? All right, all in favor? Great. Happy to have you. Welcome to the district.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. The hiring people portion of the agenda is over. Let's move into hearing a report on the Department of Education's Tier 2 Targeted Support and Improvement.
Good evening, everyone. As I said in my memo last week, you would be getting this report from Shanda, but unfortunately, Shanda's called away on family business urgently. So I am, I have created something to share with you. So last Friday, I sent you this memo that we received a letter from the Maine Department of Education. And as part of our annual testing, Maine Education Assessment, we test all grade 11 students. And they have developed a matrix to determine whether or not a school is a tier 1, tier 2, or tier 3 school for identification purposes, on how well they're doing, how well subgroups are doing, and where schools might need some improvement. And so our school district has been identified as a tier 2 school based on our 11th grade performance. And so what is the difference between these? So a tier 1 school is any school with one or more student populations experiencing challenges across all indicators. And a tier 2 school is any school with one or more of the same student populations consistently experiencing challenges over three years in the same indicators. And a tier 3 school is schools where all student populations are experiencing challenges across all indicators. So schools in Maine fall into these three categories as per NDOE identification. So what is the high school? How is the high school being measured? The NWEA MAP Growth is a nationally normed standardized achievement test that measures what students know and informs what they're ready to learn next by using an adaptive computer test that adjusts to the ability and knowledge of the student. All third-year high school students take the test in Maine. So AI has been in the news lately, and so the MEA has changed a bit. There's a little bit of artificial intelligence going on. So when a student takes the test, if the student's doing really well, they make the question a little harder. And if the student, they keep on asking the harder questions, and then if he makes an error, then it drops down back a bit. So it's adaptive. And so the people that test the reliability and validity of the NWEA feel very confident that the results we get are fairly accurate. So there's a bit of a discrepancy because in the definition of tier 2, any school with one or more of the same student populations consistently experiencing challenges over three years in the same indicators. But the measure, we're being measured over school year 2018 and '19, five years ago, and 2021, '22. So I don't see a third school year. So I'm not quite sure why that is. This is, Shonda is more in-depth knowledge about this, so perhaps she knows, but we're only being measured over two years. And then the other discrepancy is 2021, '22, which was the COVID year, where kids came to school every other day, we use the NWEA. And 2018, '19 was the last year we used the PSAT. So I'm not exactly sure the apples and oranges on comparing results, but it's neither here nor there. We can get answers to those questions later. I just want you to note that there is a discrepancy in the same document. They're saying over a three-year period, yet they're saying just 2018, '19, and '21, '22. What indicators identify GNG as a tier 2 school by the Maine Department of Education? Attendance, 28.9% of GNG students were identified as chronically absent, missing 10% or more of all scheduled school days. English language arts, 71% of GNG students met the achievement target goal. MDOE expected 82.8% of our students to meet the achievement goal. Mathematics, 72.2% of GNG students met the achievement target goal. MDOE expected 87% of our students to meet the achievement target goal. Graduation rate for the last four-year period, 90.5% of GNG students met the achievement target goal. MDOE expected 88.2% of students to meet the achievement goal. So we met the goal when we look at all 11th graders. However, we have two subgroups that did not meet the goal. So we got dinged because of the six subgroups, two or three of them did not meet that goal. Graduation rate over a five-year period, 93% of GNG students met the target goal. MDOE expected 90.4% of students to meet the achievement goal. So again, everyone in that cohort as a group met the goal. But we had two or three subgroups that did not meet the goal. So that counts towards the tier 2 identification. What does this, what does the MDOE require us to do to exit tier 2 status? For a GNG high school to exit tier 2 status, all student populations that were identified initially need to show meeting or exceeding the status. So for example, what we're going to need to demonstrate is, I talked about some of those subgroups. So it might be, let's say, economically disadvantaged students were one of those student subgroups that did not meet the achievement goal. We would have to demonstrate in the next cycle of testing that we made significant improvements there. It could be that students, students with disabilities perhaps didn't meet one of the goals in English, math, or attendance. We would have to demonstrate that that subgroup met the goal in the new round of testing and the new round of attendance that they look at. So they're expecting us to make some significant growth in the groups, subgroups that were identified. And so plan of action, the principal, assistant principal, curriculum director, teacher leaders will work with an MDOE-assigned leadership coach. They'll develop specific strategies to look at what areas of the MEA did those subgroups of students do specifically that they need improvement or need to learn and provide some reteaching. We're going to need some sort of school-wide initiative to deal with attendance. I think the community update in February spoke at length about attendance in our school district. I think it's been a problem for all school districts, and it's been a problem for employers. For two years, two and a half years of COVID, we told people, stay home, stay home, stay home. And the idea of getting to work every day or getting to school every day has not bounced back the way it should. So I think that the attendance piece is something that the high school has been working on, but we're going to need to significantly improve the attendance rate. Because right now, the data says 28.9, just under 30%, are missing more than 10% of every school day on the calendar.
But again, that's from the '21, '22 school year.
I believe the attendance data is this year. So the testing, the MEA testing.
Is the attendance data this year or is it '21, '22? Because we knew that we had. Yeah, it's no ways from this year.
Yeah.
So we knew that we had a 30%. I heard that number because they're going to school every other day and they're.
So the newest update on this data will come up from MDOE this fall. So when they reevaluate and they have all our data from this year, they're going to republish. And there is a possibility that we could self-correct on some of these things, but we'll see. So we're going to work on attendance rates and graduation rates. And this is a school-wide effort. And future reporting, tier 2 improvements will be a primary agenda item for the curriculum committee in September or October. And the school board will receive a comprehensive update on implementing specific tier 2 strategies and initial progress in either the October or the November school board business meeting.
I have some questions, but I will open up the floor to the board for questions, if we have any.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
The absenteeism, on the other items you gave, English, math, graduation rates, you had a, you kind of put it in context with a DOE number. Is there a similar DOE number for absenteeism?
Yeah, the absentee measure is a student missing 10% or more of your school day calendar.
So that was 28.9 was, and we're 28 is.
Pardon me?
You said our absenteeism was what, 28?
28.9.
28.9.
Do we know what like the average absenteeism is?
No, but that can be generated for.
I think it would be good to know how far we are off the target.
Yeah.
Or the people next door, you know, either statewide or regionally.
Yeah. There is reams of data. I chose not to bring it tonight simply because it's, it'll be the work of the curriculum committee and to do the deep dive in those.
I realize you're subbing for Shandra. Anyway. Now, the subgroups, you mentioned there were two of six subgroups. I assume one is people with disabilities, but what were the other ones?
So the subgroups are. So they measure all students, and they measure Asian, then economically disadvantaged, Hispanic or Latino, students with disabilities, and then two or more races, and then white. So those are the subcategories. And probably the one that affects us the most are economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities would be the two primary groups that we would need to work with. Those two groups would account for a large majority of the students that need to show some improvement.
I just really wasn't sure what kind of subgroups we were talking about.
Yeah.
Again, not putting you on the spot, this is just data I think we should definitely have. Do we know how many tier 2 schools there are in the state?
I do not know off the top of my head. We have a lot of anecdotal.
Yeah, I did a Zoom call with the MDOE this week, and anecdotally, there was probably 30 to 40 Zoom windows open on that screen. So I think, you know, when you think about the trends of COVID, like Craig talked about, I think a lot of schools have been identified due to attendance, especially with economically disadvantaged, which when you see the data, that is our most acute data point that we have to hone in on. And we saw that gap grow in attendance and in achievement in COVID across the country. So we have neighbors who are, we're in good company, unfortunately.
And part of that achievement is not testing. So we're going to have different ways that we have to test.
This is public information, so we, as administrators, the superintendent and the principal, got the report first. The identification, along with all other MEA data and school data, is on the MDOE data dashboard. So I'm not sure if it's there yet, but at a certain point, you would be able to see each school and if they're a tier 1, tier 2, or tier 3.
It's on the dashboard and it's public. Not this year's, but all of us told the data.
Yeah, I think probably Will, with his long history on the curriculum committee, would join me in saying it is hard to take the MDOE seriously. join me in saying it's hard to take the MDOE seriously when they've had, what, eight different tests in the last ten years that they're telling us is the super important test that I'm supposed to like use to make decisions about my school with. They went PSAT, they had an MEA, they lost an MEA, never gave us scores on it. Now they said, oh, it's going to be the NUIA, then it's a different flavor of the NUIA. So I have to say, it's hard for me to take these things seriously. But I, I am going to take it seriously. It's just hard sometimes.
All right, I got one last question, I guess.
Yep, go ahead.
On the English and the math, we're about, we're approximately ten percent off of the, the DOE's benchmark that you, that you used, but we're, we're, we're over on graduation. What does that, what does that indicate?
Well, what it indicates is, is that we work really hard to get every student graduated. That's part of the things that we do in the advisory program is every student is accounted for. We look at the report cards eight times a year for students falling behind. We work with that student, we get the student the help they need. And so our graduation rate here has traditionally been very high. I've been here for seven years and, and for years before I arrived, the graduation rates had been, had been quite high. But I think, you know, I think the average person, if you kept to school every day and you never missed class, the tests will take care of themselves. But if you have high absenteeism, you know, if I were to miss ten days of chemistry, I, you know, I could predict what that test grade would be. So I think, you know, the, regardless of what we think of the data and, I, I think that getting kids to school every day would ameliorate a lot of these other subgroup testing issues.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on that?
All right, let's move into a sort of related discussion about possible changes to the high school accreditation. Welcome Sadie and Jade.
Julia, the other thing I'll say about your question is that things like NEASK are norm based off from like a college readiness. You know, they want to see all juniors ready for a four-year sort of liberal arts college curriculum, and so that's where they set their benchmark. And the reality is, is that some students are never going to test, some students don't want that pass, and some students are never going to test for that benchmark. So you will see like more affluent, affluent communities, I think, hit that benchmark more with kids who, with a higher percentage of kids who are headed towards that goal.
Mm-hmm.
So I, we see that discrepancy because that's sort of their norm and that's not where every kid who walks across that stage is going to be tested.
Understood, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, approach. My computer? I'll scroll down myself.
Just take a little audio video, Jared is still here, he can play us some music.
Hey.
Oh yeah, actually, find us out the hardwoods. Oh, you already got it. Pass these down.
Over here.
Do you need one more?
Yeah, level of talent is really high.
All right.
You ready to rock and roll?
Fantastic.
All right, you're never supposed to hand out fun things in the middle of meetings, so please away, I promise.
Oh hardwood?
Yeah.
So again, as Sam just referenced, we're here to talk about the school improvement at Brandy Gloucester High School. We're considering a shift away from NEASK, which is New England Association of Schools and College. Just a little bit of a history with NEASK. Historically, NEASK has been considered the gold standard for assessment and developing school improvement plans for secondary schools. Throughout the presentation, we'll highlight some concerns regarding the quality of the reports that we're getting, our, as to include our most recent report, and also some information from surrounding schools within the state of Maine and also New England. I just want to make sure that we highlight that we are absolutely committed to school improvement and accountability measures to really give us some data to be able to maintain the high-quality school that we currently have. So it's not that we're trying to go away from that by any means, but we're just looking at what's best to align with our strategic plan. Many times, working with NEASK tends to, again, it used to be that high standard, now it's a lot of times a checkbox, and it's not directly aligned to our strategic plan or the work that we need to know to move forward for our building and our district. So again, we want to make sure that this does not negatively impact any post-secondary or future opportunities for our students, that we're really valuing the limited time of professional development that we have with our staff. And also financial resources is definitely something we will touch upon as well. Part of the NEASK process, they'll be doing a self-reflection, which will be completed by, we've started the initial discussions on the self-reflection, but this summer to this fall, if we did go with NEASK, we'd have to complete a self-reflection. The NEASK team would visit the school in 2024 for a collaborative visit, which they would review our self-assessment, our self-reflection, and they would develop a school growth plan that we would have to implement moving forward. Then they would come back with, or we would complete the reflective summary report on how we think we did with their school improvement team. And again, a lot of the times, it is not directly aligned with strategic plan goals and/or building our district goals. And then we'd have two years to work on that, and they would come again in 2026 for the decennial accreditation visit, which happens once every ten years. So in the past, it was one visit every ten years, and now it's two visits throughout every ten years that we'd have a team, team here. Definitely keeping students as our priority. So we've done a lot of research on how this may or may not impact students. Superintendent King has been in contact with a variety of colleges to ask, you know, to gather feedback on, do they use NEASK accreditation as part of their application process? And I will be sharing a document with you at the end, I'll provide it all for you to look at. But he heard back from fourteen schools. Ten of those schools, they don't even consider NEASK when looking at the accreditation process, and there were a few that said, it doesn't matter if you use NEASK or a different resource, we just want some type of organization to really make sure that you're best practice in reviewing your school. Approximately ten years ago, the three Portland Public High Schools, Tascow Bay, Portland High, and Deering High School all moved away from NEASK. I believe they all use Great Schools, which is a different organization that comes in and really focuses on, they call it their strategic plan, like the Portland Promise. So it would really focus on your strategic plan, and again, reviewing your school, looking at moving that forward.
I think quickly to, to just talk for a second about Portland, because obviously I, that's a place where I transplanted from. There was never any detriment to college admissions, to scholarships, to grants, to getting students into Ivy League institutions or the military. They never saw a reported or lived effect of having made that shift for post-secondary options for kids.
And some of the schools they had were Harvard, Yale, I mean, they had a whole list that they provided us of.
We got those in there too.
Yes. No, no, I'm saying, but that didn't impact.
Right.
That didn't impact. And over the past decade, there are dozens of schools throughout Maine, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, the entire Boston area has now were pulled away from NEASK. And there are basically a lot of the similar reasons, financial resources, and also they really wanted to target work that they needed to work on instead of just sort of that checkbox. All of those schools, there were no reports of any impact or declining, like Jade just referenced, to college admissions, scholarships, or any post-secondary transitions.
So just kind of the meat of what we wanted to talk about is these, these items that you see in black are what NEASK says to us, if they want us to be involved in their process. These are the things that they are saying they offer to your school. And the first one is supporting school improvement and growth plans. And the red is kind of where we've been grappling with if this is, you know, a best route for us. And the financial cost of this process is more than a first-year teacher and a first-year ed tech, right? So you're talking forty to ninety thousand dollars to work through this process in fees, in lodging, in the, you know, the visit, the quality of visitation we have to offer to these people, and the hu- the human time that's spent. Sadie, I won't belabor the point, but it is not guaranteed that those improvement and growth plans align with what we've already committed to, to you all, which is that local strategic plan. And then the process itself, it's just, it's very laborious, it's very time-consuming, there's a lot of check, sort of checkbox items that take away from other professional development and other things we want to be doing with our staff and students. So we're just kind of concerned about the density of the process. And then the other bullet up there is around that it's a peer review process, and teachers like this. Educators like when other educators are the people coming in, having that experience with them, people who really understand what it's like to be in a school versus a consultant or, you know, somebody with a degree but hasn't been in the classroom. And I like that aspect of the process. It's one of the aspects I liked going through it in other districts. The problem is that you get a great variance in the quality of the reports because you have no control over the makeup of those educators, of their experience with NEASK, or sort of their skills in being a facilitator and an interviewer and a report writer. So while it, I think it's a trusting process, the quality of the report is really contingent on the quality of your team, which is a, is a roll of the dice, I guess, in my opinion. And then the other two is, you know, they really talk about honing in. We know in education, the two things that create the best student outcomes are good teaching and that leads to good learning. Like those are the two, those are the things that you control, you have good student outcomes. And NEASK says, that is our focus, that is what we hone in on. The reality is, the review is very, very broad. You know, Sadie and I, if we move through with this, will spend time writing reports about facilities and bathrooms and athletic fields and historical reports about the community. The scope of it is not really honing in on instruction, which is where you get your biggest bang for your buck when you're trying to improve a school. And that goes right along with just really limiting our PD time. This process will be one hundred percent of the focus for our teacher leaders over the next eighteen months, if this is the process we choose. And there's a lot of other ways we'd really like to use our most tenured and veteran instructional leaders in the building. And then finally, they talk a lot about this being an opportunity for staff to work collaboratively, collectively, to reflect on, to reflect on progress and growth. What happens if you've ever been through this process is it's so laborious that schools adopt a divide and conquer approach. They chop up the process, they hand different things to different departments and different people, and everyone works, you know, feverishly to make sure they meet deadlines. And that, that really can dilute an environment where you're trying to work to really have true collaborative instructional processes. So just some, some concerns we have about what NEASK says they do for schools, and then what our lived experience has been and what other regional schools, why other regional schools are having the same head scratch right now. And then I think, and Sadie definitely jump in, but like, you know, we wanted to finish, similar to what Sadie started with, is that school improvement is our priority. Like this is why we go to school every day, this is why we're invested in this really hard work, and we don't want to move away from having progress measures and having systems of accountability for whether or not we're really serving all of our kids, those economically disadvantaged kids that you saw in that Tier Two report. So things that we've been discussing as possible alternatives are to really dig in, dig into that Tier Two status, to get that coach from the Maine DOE to help us write that improvement plan, to focus next year with our staff on things like attendance and universal best practices for kids living in poverty and math scores, you know, to really use that, what can be kind of like, we weren't happy when we got that letter, but we can use it as a vehicle for improvement. So we've talked about that. Great Schools partnership is another viable alternative that we've, you know, had some communication with. It, it does cost money, but the effectiveness, the quality of it, the, the coaching and individualized aspect of what they can give to us as leaders and our teacher leaders seems to be, just seems to be a, possibly a better fit that we want to explore.
And a lot of their focus is on instruction and equity and looking at all the groups to make sure. So I think that aligns a lot really closely with our Tier Two, with our need right now as well. And the one, Quality School Review, and they call it Quality School Framework there, that's the organization that most of Massachusetts and New Hampshire are currently using. They have a huge family component, making sure that parents and families are getting really good data about the schools, they're diving into your strategic plan, and they look at a lot of growth from year to year, so not just standardized tests, but how are students making growth, looking at curriculum, looking at instruction. And then also a focus on culture, like what is the climate and culture in your building? And then again, making sure families are looped in, so it's more of the all-around approach through that organization. The last one today.
Yeah, the last thing we've, we've, you know, we've spitballed about this since I was hired and Sadie was hired as the full-time principal, is there's a great cohort of Cumberland County administrators that meet monthly to talk about strategies around leadership and around school improvement. And, you know, we've just talked, had some conversations with them about banding cohorts together, doing some collaborative work with leadership teams, doing site visits, and doing like a two or three-year process with regional partners like Poland, like Wyndham, like Freeport, people who are kind of experiencing similar, similar hardship and have a similar demographic, and using those, using those teams of people as a way to make school improvement goals and work together. Because you do want people outside of your building to have some eyes and some voice, right? You don't want to, you don't want to be an echo chamber when you're talking about whether or not you're doing well. So that's another more informal idea that we've, we've talked a lot about.
And having been to, once a month, we go into every school in Cumberland County. And just having that experience of meeting with their teachers and learning about their programs and seeing their hallways and just so many different things that we're all taking away from one another's schools, and we're like, how neat it would be to get a group of teachers like in each other's and kind of going through a similar process in addition to an organization such as whether it's NEASK, Great Schools, Quality Schools, but just having that additional layer with local schools as well. I think that's it. So what I will share with you and leave you guys with is, this is the email that Craig sent out and he, the information that he got from schools. Again, he heard back from Boston University, University of Maine, Maine Maritime, Tufts University, and many others. So I will leave you with this, as well as a sheet that goes into, it's kind of mirrors our PowerPoint, but it goes into a little more detail with information on that as well.
All right. Questions, thoughts? Go ahead, Gary.
Where, where is this leading? We're up against NEASK at this point, right?
We are. So. Yeah, so we're hoping to make the decision whether to either continue moving forward with NEASK and/or other options. In the near future, we are on a time, it's very time-sensitive, we would start next school year, or the summer really for a lot of work.
Yeah, we, we've already dug in and done a lot of preparatory work with staff for that initial visit and beefing up like our vision of the graduate and our core values, because we want to do work around that stuff this summer, but to prepare for the process. But we'd love to make a decision this summer so that we can steer our energies elsewhere.
Right, and the parts of the process that we've really focused on are, like Jade was saying, the ones that we would want to do regardless, if we're working with NEASK, it's just good practice, so.
Go ahead, Craig.
So this is a big decision, and so I didn't want to spring this on the school board and say yea or nay. So you've seen the PowerPoint presentation, you have a little more in-depth document that Sadie and Jade have prepared. Go home, think about it, mullet, read the report, and they will be back. We have a school board meeting next Wednesday. We have a school board meeting, uh, next Wednesday to ratify the, uh, vote. And so that would be a time to have further discussion. NEAS has an extensive website, uh, you would want to look at NEAS, uh, Commission on Secondary, uh, Public Schools. Um, so this is kind of a, a decision. Um, and so, uh, I, I would not rush the decision, but between this meeting, the next meeting, and maybe even August nine, to think about whether or not we want to move forward with this, uh, commit so much money. Um, I used to be Mr. NEAS. I led two high schools through accreditation. Uh, one high school in particular, I was able to align the NEAS report with the strategic plan, with the school goals, with the MEA, and it was symmetrical and everything moved forward. And we used NEAS to create some of the important things. The advisory program that was built in SAD seventy-five had been driven by the NEAS report. We had a really good visiting team, we had a really good self-study, we had a report we could use. I also served on two visiting committees, and I, I think Jade hit it on the head. The quality and it, it really, it really, uh, uh, it depends. So, um, they'll be back next week, look at the website. Uh, we'll answer questions for you, um, next week again. You know, you're talking about timely, you know, NEAS used to be the only game in town. You know, twenty years ago, when I first had my administrative position, there, there were no outside groups to come in. You know, all you had was, so things have changed. Now, for example, wasn't a thrill to get that letter, but they pointed out three areas that we need to improve. I didn't need a visiting committee to tell me that. I'd get the data, it's timely, giddy up, we're gonna work on it right away. Is that more valuable to me than NEAS? I don't know, it's, 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 it's something to ponder.
So initially, um, at this point, there's no recommendation being made. It's just whether or not we want to leave.
Uh, yeah, I think that's something to think about, and, and I'd want you to ponder it. Look at the website, look at the information that Jade and Sadie have shared with you, and, and continue the conversation next meeting.
So if we, if we were to support discontinuing with NEAS, there would be, future meetings where there would be proposals made as to who we would then go with.
So the only, uh, caveat I got from any of the admissions officers, and I got a, a wide, uh, I cast a wide net, and I heard directly from Orenno, UVM, UNH, um, Tufts, Fort Kent, Maine Maritime Academy, a, a nice, uh, cross-section BU, and about ten of them said, this doesn't matter in any way, shape, or form. The others would have a caveat. If you choose to move away, this wouldn't hurt you, but we would like to see what kind of external review you have. But.
But that decision on what that review will look like is a step two.
That's a step two.
Right. Okay. Uh, at what point would we be, uh, when does our accreditation lapse?
We would need to sign in the very near future to commit. We're gonna ask possibly for an extension to go through this process, but, um, we would be starting this, this summer, would start the work.
Right, so if we didn't do this work at the end of twenty twenty-four.
Yes, the end of next year.
So, so the end of twenty-four is when we, so actually this, um, next school year is when we would pay to have the full team here. So we would need to either have the work ready for the full team here, um, unless we receive that extension.
Okay, I said well first, yeah.
Yeah, I, just to follow Craig's comment, uh, I did two NEAS surveys, and the quality of the teams were uneven. And I think the checkbox approach is a very valid comment. Uh, it, it, there were elements of rigidity to it that, you know, it, it didn't feel right in terms of providing really quality feedback to those environments. And if you look at a cost-benefit issue, one of the things we've got going for us in terms of the, uh, university acceptance is the IB program. If you, if you have an IB program, even if you are sending out kids who are not in the IB program, you're telling the university community you have a commitment to rigor. That, to me, is probably more credibility to the district than any accreditation document, uh, is ever gonna produce. But the, yeah, I mean, the, the alternatives certainly need to be explored carefully, but, uh, I, I think the presentation was sound.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Maybe, uh, Dr. King, you might be the best person for this. I mean, this, this accreditation, uh, group, it's been around for fifty years at least. I remember them in the late seventies.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and they were, and I remember a few years back, maybe it's ten, I don't know, Buxton, uh, High School, the High School, the Bonny Eagle High School was losing their accreditation. It was in the news a lot, it was like, it was a big deal. Now it's, what's, what's happened? Why, why is this, uh, accreditation group no longer that viable or significant?
Cause they, um, because they were the only gave and kept, and so, uh, and it did make a big deal, you know, uh, that you came from a accredited, a NEAS accredited. There's five regions where NEAS, New England, so it did make a big deal. And it was the only place to go to get someone to do, uh, evaluation. Um, and so, as a matter of fact, I don't think it was till the eighties that the state really gave standardized tests that you were accountable for. That never came really until nineteen ninety-two. So you have many different ways to have yourself evaluated. Uh, yours to me at Fort Kent, um, which I have ties to, I found it very interesting. They said, oh, but you're one of those IB high schools in Maine. The four of you are kind of okay because you're an IB high school. Um, which, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I, I would take that with a grain of salt, but. What I, what IB puts you through to become an IB school is a lot of those same quality control standards that make sure you're, uh, providing a great program.
So it sounds like there's market competition now.
There is market competition, yeah.
And one comment I'll make, that in parts of my career, I was an environmental manager for a manufacturing facility, and we found that we got a lot more out of, instead of having a third-party audit come around and, you know, snoop around, see how you run your organization, would have a, a similar peer or a group of peers from other companies, uh, sit the same, within the same company elsewhere across the country, would, would have a much, but would do a self-audit.
Yeah. It sounds like, that was sort of a last suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what we would really love to move forward with Cumberland County administrators.
And, and, and beneficial.
And I'll go back to that, to that report. And this would never come from a NEAS report. Oh. Yeah, you have a ninety-four percent graduation rate. But what about the free and reduced lunch kids? And what about the kids with special needs? Hold your horses. It's nice that your whole school did well, but let's dig a little deeper. So some of these reports, as much as we don't like them and then we might think they're a black eye, they dig a lot deeper and, and, and get to the crux of the matter sometimes. Um, and so, um, yeah, so I don't know. I just think it's worth thinking about, talking about, and come back July eighth. It, it is a, I can tell you right now that there would be superintendents or school boards out there that say, yes, we agree with a hundred percent of what you say, but just to be safe, we're staying with NEAS. And so I would certainly understand that political, uh, dimension as a board member or as a superintendent, because it is, you know, uh, I remember fifteen years ago, Farmington moved away from it, and I knew that superintendent very well, and I knew that school district very well, and that was like a seismic shift, it was like, uh, so it is kind of a, uh.
It's like a no one ever gets fired for choosing IBM type of deal?
Yeah.
I think too.
Is that still insane?
My dad is.
I think if we made a shift away and then felt like either politically or value-wise it was the wrong move, NEAS is always gonna take our check, right? So if, if there were repercussions for our kids or we just had concerns about, um, you know, community perception or things like that, I think they would take our phone call no matter when we called and said, you know what, we'd really like to, to get back involved and have you guys come in, so.
And I think it's really been beneficial to collaborate with surrounding schools, even Portland High, Casco Bay, I mean, they've been out of NEAS for at least ten years.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, so I think it's really good to have their feedback with the zero impact on students and, and also the benefits of having a different organization come in and again, really honing in on what they need as a school and as a district.
Okay, Penny, yeah?
Yeah, um, I fully support not doing something just to do it. It's never been a favorite with me, but I'm just curious on the timing, um, where we're up against the end of this period, right? And we're saying that, it sounds like what I'm hearing is we should have something in place. Um, but it doesn't have to be this. Is there an amount of time in which we need to have something in place? Or it's not, like, it's not gonna affect next year's seniors, for example, or applying to schools if like, we're in the middle of doing something else? It's not that.
No, cause we are technically accredited through twenty twenty-six. So twenty twenty-six is our ten-year. So we start our process, so we have the first visit, the first, yes. The first, the first big site visit is twenty twenty-four. So the spring, next school year, the spring is when we would have to have the team here.
But we're still accredited until twenty twenty-six.
Right, so we still have, we're still with NEAS until twenty twenty-six.
Great.
Uh, I'm not certain how long it would go once we, if we said we'd no longer want to be part of it. I'm not sure how that, that process, I don't know if you.
Well, I've had experience. NEAS has changed a lot, um, dealing with them, they are an entity, they are, they, they require revenues. Um, my previous school district, we had a very serious, serious budget year, and that school district had three high schools all up for accreditation. So that was like a check for seventy thousand dollars. And I called them and I said, look, I need a year off, and they granted it. Um, I don't know if it's that easy still.
Sure.
Um, you know, but it's worth staying, you know, the, I, I, it's worth calling to see if we, you know, what, what actually would happen.
Yeah, and I can touch base.
Okay. I feel good. Anybody have other questions, discussions? All right, uh, why don't we, uh, take another look at the school calendar that we apparently had a typo?
Thank you guys so much.
Thanks, guys. Uh, usually the calendar is a Chanda thing, um.
So actually, this isn't a Chanda thing anymore. It was for years and years and years, and then it kind of got taken over by, because of the regulations around, um, regional vocational sending schools. We had to have thirteen schools in agreement, and they, um, had to have five similar days. We got there, but there were a couple of typos. One is, uh, uh, November thirty-first.
There is no such.
There is no such thing.
Glad we fixed that.
And so that has to be removed. And then there was another piece, I can't remember off the top of my head.
That changes the last day of school.
Oh, that changes the last day of school.
And then it was marked that February thirteenth was the early release on the bottom of the words, but it's actually the fourteenth.
Okay, well, that's us, that's not, that's not past, but. And so, uh, since the calendar is the prerogative of the board and requires a vote, we felt we needed to bring it back, and, cause maybe you do want us to go to school November thirty-first.
Stranger things have probably happened. Uh, I would hear a motion on, uh, approving the new and improved typo-free calendar.
So move.
Seconded.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Okay. Okay, uh, moving into, uh, oh, yeah, um, let's see. The recommendation from the Curriculum Committee regarding the K-two mathematics instructional material. Oh, Amanda is pinch hitting, and dang, okay, let's go. Uh, we talked about this in the last Curriculum Committee meeting. So why don't we do this, should we do this in discussion? Now, let's have, uh, so let's, why don't we present the K-two mathematics instructional material under consideration, then we'll have a motion, and then we'll take it from there.
Excellent, uh, we're filling in for Chanda this evening. Uh, this is usually in her wheelhouse, so we're just gonna do our best to channel our inner Chanda and share with you the process that we've taken so far. Um, so basically, uh, we haven't had a consistent program of materials for mathematics at the K-to-two level. I think our last purchase was around two thousand four, two thousand five. So it's been quite a while, um, and we, we've noticed at our ten years at Russell and Memorial that we need a more consistent approach to mathematics instruction. Um, and so we embarked upon that last school year. Um, the timing was good because we actually had, um, kind of finished up with our, our language arts reviews, and, and now we were ready to focus on math. Um, annual reporting, uh, to the board showed that a student achievement data had indicated some challenges with mathematics achievement in general, um, but also showed that there were sometimes issues at transition years, um, like, but, you know, between pre-K and K for us and between second and third grade. Um, and some of that, uh, we attribute to a lack of consistency in, um, delivering that mathematic instruction. Uh, so we did a best practices analysis at the K-to-two level. We actually had two, um, early releases, two consecutive years, where we worked with Jen Robitelli, who works at the Department of Education. She's one of their mathematics specialists, and she came out and worked with our teaching staff two Octobers in a row in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And then we embarked on exploring what math programs, um, would meet the standards for us, um, in terms of alignment and usability. Um, we used ed reports, um, Chanda directed us towards that. I think there were maybe ten programs on ed reports that met the criteria that we were looking for. Um, we met with several reps, um, we presented those programs that met the criteria to our staff. Um, and they had the opportunity to investigate and decide which programs they wished to pilot from that list. Um, and then we embarked on the complete one-year pilot, so quite a comprehensive pilot of mathematic materials. Um, and during that time, um, we had four different programs at Memorial and.
Three different programs.
And three at Russell. Some of those programs were the same, um, between both schools, and some of them were different. Um, our teachers met in pilot groups routinely, once a month generally at Memorial. Uh, and then they also met with their grade-level groups where they might have three or four different teachers piloting three or four different programs. Um, so they spent a lot of professional learning time talking about math instruction and talking about the programs and the benefits and the drawbacks of each.
Yeah, um, from there, we started, as we worked through these programs, we started to develop a list of criteria based on our work with Jen Robitelli about best practices, instructional routines, those sorts of things. Um, and then things, um, we dug back into some of the, the qualities and characteristics that we had used in other program reviews, um, to develop a comprehensive list of attributes that we would want to see in a program that we moved forward. Um, at the end, at, by some strike of fate, all of our teachers across both buildings came to consensus on one particular program. Um, and that really wasn't administratively driven. Um, they, they really worked with what they knew about math, what they really liked about programs that they've used in the past, to come forward with a proposal. Um, and we brought that proposal to Curriculum Committee last month in May, um, and talked about this process with them. Um, and so tonight, we're here to try to move that process forward so that we can get some new math materials in our hands, uh, get some training scheduled for the summer, and be ready to roll out in the fall.
And, uh, the program they selected was, uh, the Bridges Mathematics Program. Um, and the, uh, initial price tag of implementing Bridges is around forty-seven thousand dollars. Um, we finally, we have our quotes in line, um, and professional development's actually included in the materials, so, um, so we will present that to you. We would like to, uh, hit the ground running with Bridges in the fall.
Great, uh, can I hear from the Curriculum Chair, any thoughts?
No, I think the, the process.
No, I think the, the process, uh, of looking at it, it's extended over a period of time, this wasn't something they did in six weeks. And I think they've looked, looked at multiple pieces. The research level in math is nowhere near as strong as it is in reading. So looking at research to try and find, all right, what really is the most effective approach? Uh, I don't think there's nearly as much consensus there as there is with reading. So the process itself at the local level, I think speaks volumes in terms of the, the level of teacher involvement, the time that's been taken, uh, some comparisons that they've made. So, yeah, could it be a mistake? Sure. Not likely, you know, I, I think it's, it's not gonna take them down the wrong rabbit hole. And I suspect five years from now, they'll know a lot more about the strengths and weaknesses. And as long as there's a willingness to adapt and supplement, uh, I think it should be quite safe in going this direction.
Great, uh, I was at that meeting where, uh, they presented all the work, and there was a number of, uh, elementary teachers there, and I think you remember, Jim, they were really enthusiastic. Um, so I certainly don't have any qualms, um, and I, and also to clarify on the money, this is, uh, dollars in the budget we already.
Yeah, we would actually look to, um, use year-end funds.
Right.
To get as much, to purchase as much as we could, and then we would supplement with next year's dollars.
Um, all right, so, uh, I would hear a motion on, uh, going forward with the purchase of the Bridges K two math program.
So moved.
Seven. Any further discussion on that? All right, all in favor? Beautiful, all right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can't remember which teacher it was, but I think they were going to be very upset.
They clearly did their due diligence.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. All right, uh, let's get into the policy portion of the agenda. Uh, let's see, I would hear a motion on replacing policy K E B with policy K E.
I move we replace policy K E V, complaints about school personnel with K E, public concerns and complaints.
Second.
All right, uh, let's go into discussion, policy chair, why are we doing this?
Okay, um, this is a, uh, is this one of those replacements? It is a new, um, we would be freshly adopting this, um, so we're pla- replacing a different one. Stay is pretty consistent with what we've had, um, in the past. We did some wording around ensuring that, uh, the goal is that folks try to resolve their issue, um, at the most appropriate level before moving complaints. Um, and after that, where do they go? It's pretty straightforward.
Questions, thoughts? Yep.
So this is looking at K E, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So am I incorrect if you take a look at the red line? Line fourteen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, I E classroom teacher than principal should be then.
Should be then, yes.
It should be the same for.
Both of those vans should be then.
All three of those, it should be bus driver then.
Yes.
Yes, correct, thank you.
Yeah, good catch. Maggie, you got that?
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or questions? Good typo catch, all right, all in favor? Okay. Moving to policy K C D.
Okay, I move we approve policy K C D, public gifts and donations to the schools.
Second.
Thank you.
This one is, uh, simply, um, a review based on its date of first passage and change nothing than, uh, striking a pound sign.
Yep. Any questions?
Nope.
All in favor? It's good to review policies once every ten years, I guess. Uh, K H B?
I move to approve policy K H B, advertising in the schools.
Second.
Second.
All right.
Okay, um, this is, I believe, doesn't have a prior date because it's a replacement, though in keeping with what we've done in the past, um, we give some authorization to superintendent to consider advertising in the schools on an extremely limited basis, um, and some limits on what, uh, how our name or logo, what it can be used in conjunction with, um, in our area.
The only change we made in discussion was, um, the board does not have to approve every piece of advertising that goes into our district. Seemed a little over the top. All right, any discussion, thoughts? All in favor? Excellent. Policy I M G.
I move to approve policy I M G, animals on school district property.
Second.
Okay.
Um, this one looks, uh, like a minimal, um, review, though I will say in committee, we looked at several versions and, um, guidance policies. This has been a very hot topic, um, seeing a significant increase in people bringing their pets to, uh, school events. Um, just as a plug for our policies, please do not bring your pets to school grounds. Um, it is against our current policy and hopefully will continue to be should we approve this one. So what we ended up doing was going with what we had, it held up, um, striking a pound sign, um, but otherwise maintaining our stance on animals on school property.
Questions or thoughts? All right, all in favor? Beautiful. Okay. Uh, policy J R E.
I move to approve policy J R E, materials sent home through students.
Second.
All right, um, this is a replacement, so it doesn't have a date, but it is, um, over, going over existing similar policy, outlining what can be sent home with students. That has been consistent, and we'll go through the superintendent, um, for distribution of materials from local groups that might benefit our students.
I think, Maggie, it really should be towns apostrophe recreation programs. That's my miss. Thoughts or questions on that? All right, all in favor? Bang these out, let's go, all right. Policy B E B B.
I move we approve policy B E B B, school board business meeting agendas. Okay, this was more exciting in that we did not have this policy in existence, um, thinking it was covered elsewhere. Another review made clear to us that we were missing this, so we're adding it. Um, this is how we already conduct business, um, but how we distribute, determine and distribute agendas, um, to the public and to board members. Um, adjustments to suggested policies were that they'll be made. We limited where they'll be made, copies will be made available. Um, and in the case of committee members, committee meetings, um, admin will work with the appropriate member of the board to create the agenda, and then not necessarily follow this level of detail. Questions in that?
Does this, uh, remove the dash R? Is there?
Remove the dash. No, so there isn't, no, it doesn't. So this was, we identified this in the review of the bylaws. Is we refer to B E D B and B E D dash R. We have R, but we actually did not have a just normal DB. So there's two different things. I was thinking of R where that tells you, like, how we actually put our agenda together.
Right.
And this governs, like, who gets to set the agenda.
Yep, makes sense.
Yeah, we were, you know, it's one of the, we tried, we do the cross references every time we do the policy committee, and we looked it up and it was not in the folder, so. Now it is.
I wonder how we ended up with the dash R without it.
It could be like, you know, when it went all digital, it just never made it or something, you know, no one ever noticed.
Yeah.
All right, uh, any other thoughts or discussion? All in favor? All right. But, I mean, it's also just a testament to always going through and checking all the references, you know? Sometimes it seems tedious, but. Uh, last but not least, on the policy side, J L C D.
I move to approve policy J L C D, administering medication to students.
Thank you.
Okay, so this one got a little bit messy, so you wanna make, you have a couple. We're looking at the one move, or attempting to approve is the, um, J L C D. The, actually, which one is it? Is it the recommended red line that we should?
That we have a to be replaced, don't open that one.
Yeah, it's the NSMA one that has all the stuff that's usually locked out and deleted, but it's just written out.
So it's the recommended red line, J L C D, in our folder.
Okay, so the recommended red line, um, so this was, um, or this is a, a replacement and combines or updates in particular, um, how we administer medical cannabis and updating the language used, um, in there. This is all, this is all in keeping with applicable state law. Um, there's nothing, you know, off, off, um, the path there. And, um, we had the, um, nursing representation to talk about things such as recommendations on, on number of days of supply of medication we would keep on and, and what's reasonable there, so that, uh, input was given at committee.
Thank you. Thoughts or discussion on this one?
It's pretty straightforward.
All right, hearing done, all in favor? Okay. Bam bam, let's go, all right. Um, committee reports, uh, facilities has not met unless I missed something? Yep, okay. Uh, finance, uh, we have not met since, uh, the town meeting where we approved the budget. Um, or did we? We did meet, I'm sorry. Um, I'm sort of the acting chair on that, hold on a sec. I'm sorry. Policy curriculum personnel finance here is, we did talk about a few things. So we talked about, uh, let's see, oh yeah, so, I'm sorry, there is actually quite a few things. Uh, apologize. Um, so we, uh, have an opportunity to shop around for an auditor because our five-year, uh, contract with the auditor is up. Uh, Diane, uh, made the recommendation to us that we, uh, carry on with them. They gave us, uh, pricing for a three-year extension. Um, and so she basically asked the finance committee if we wanted to take this back out to bid or if we were happy with, uh, what we were doing, and we wanted to, you know, extend the contract as they were offering. Uh, we had some discussion about it, there's a couple of things. One is that auditors across the state are understaffed, uh, and, uh, anecdotally, uh, Diane is hearing from her peers that districts are being dropped because they don't have enough people to service all the accounts. Um, you know, maybe it's flattery, but, uh, our auditor says they like working with us, uh, they would like to keep us as a, uh, client, and also that they would, you know, not sort of immediately take us to what they're charging districts right now, which is, uh, as much as forty grand. Uh, so they offered us, um, increasing amounts of twenty six, five, twenty eight, and then twenty nine, five for the next three years. Um, and, you know, Diane just, again, did anecdotal shopping, believes that to be, um, you know, that's basically going up, I think, five grand, uh, over this year, and then three, and then it's like one and a half, one and a half, one and a half. Um, she believed that to be basically the best deal that we're likely to get. If we go out to bid, we might find ourselves with, you know, no good options. So her recommendation was that we, uh, keep going with that. Uh, we don't need to, uh, cuz it's the same contract, we don't need to, uh, vote on that. But, uh, very important that people, you know, if there are any objections to that course of action, you know, we do have the, uh, recommendation from the finance committee that we keep going. So unless there's, you know, send an email or whatever, uh, we can absolutely examine that. We don't, you know, we have one more year of audit before we have to make this decision officially. Um, so this, it's mostly just, uh, if there's concerns with audits that you've been receiving or anything like that, now is the time to say, whoa, 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 I really wanna shop around. Any questions on that? Then we also just went through some, uh, year-end purchases. Uh, we tried to, you know, buy, if we have money in the fuel kitty, we try to look around, uh, to spend that before the budget year is ending. If we can find good deals in the summer, that kind of thing, when fuel tends to be cheaper. Um, and so she just kinda gave us an update on that. Uh, we went through the budget presentation that we ended up making at May eighteenth. Uh, we talked about, um, the, uh, COPS grant briefly, uh, cuz we had talked about that in, uh, facilities as well. Uh, the badges have been distributed, that kind of thing. Um, and, uh, some things that we should be looking for. We're going to be going out to bid for a new truck and a new van that were in the budget. Um, and, uh, we're using quotes right now for the memorial water tank replacement to make a decision on that, and that might come before us. The, uh, some board, some bids might come to the finance committee this summer. Uh, depends on, I think it's if it's under fifty thousand, um, that she can make the call. If it's over fifty thousand, we have to vote on it. Um, so it depends on where the bill, like, the van might be forty eight thousand, she'll just buy it or whatever happens to be, so. Uh, more on that as it comes in. Uh, and that was the finance committee meeting, any questions on that? All right. Uh, personnel?
Personnel, uh, went through quite a few things in our agenda as well. Uh, first, we talked about open positions, which is pretty much a, a standard on our agenda. Um, not really gonna talk about those right now cuz I'm sure those have changed since then, uh, they're constantly changing, so. Uh, I think we've hired some and we've had some, uh, others leave, so. Um, we talked about new hires, um, you know, that, that we had, which I think you saw tonight. Um, school, uh, so we did have a topic for school board participation in interview. So we're gonna be interviewing people, uh, coming up, um, from pretty much here on. If anyone is interested and available and can, uh, sit in on some interviews, uh, I'd reach out to, um, you know, some of the principals, whoever's doing some of the, the hiring for those positions. Typically, they reach out looking for volunteers, but, uh, I would definitely, you know, reach out and see if there's, uh, any, any positions that you can sit in on. The, we also, um, got some additional information about the, the counselor job descriptions. Uh, we are still reviewing those. If you remember, we're talking about reviewing the job descriptions to make sure everything's in alignment when we're talking about the change in our terminology for counselors in the district. So wanna make sure everything's in line for that. Um, we're also going to be, uh, I think the work has already started, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, reviewing support staff job descriptions, uh, in preparation for, uh, uh, contract negotiations next year. So that work, I believe, has been started, correct? Thank you. Um, and then we had an update on, like, an, an, uh, administration, uh, survey of, uh, kind of creating a risk register to see where our risks are. Uh, that work is kind of already started, if you remember, way back at the beginning of the year. Uh, we kinda had an update as far as who's responsible for what and who's reporting to who. That was kind of the beginning, but we're also now looking at those responsibilities within the district to see, you know, where do we have situations where we have one person that knows all in that particular area, and they're the only person. So taking a look at, at things like that. So taking a look at, at things like that. So, um, that's some work that's being done. Um, and then we went into an executive session, um, to, oh, sorry, before that, we did get an update on, uh, teacher contracts. There was a, uh, a correction that needed to be made to the teacher contract, some language that was, um, unintentionally omitted, uh, in the final draft of that. So everyone was in agreement, so it was just some, you know, minor language change that needed to be added back into the contract. Um, and then we entered into executive session to discuss contract matter. That was it.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions on any of that? Uh, echoing, uh, the call for sitting on the interview committees, uh, I sat on the interview committee for the band teacher for the middle school. Uh, you just learn so much about what goes on in schools because the rest of the committee is all made up of administrators and teachers and you see what their concerns are and you see what they're asking about. Uh, I just definitely learned a lot about the, sort of how our band teachers integrated with the middle school and how they define the position and why our position. Uh, we, we had a great candidate slate, I would've hired any of them. Um, and it's because, you know, the way we've shaped the position allows them to be in one building the whole time, work with one cohort of students all the time. Many districts have their music teacher going, you know, K through six and then seven through twelve or something. Uh, the middle school band teacher and the high school band teacher are able to focus on their schools, so, you know. Just an example of, you get a perspective on why people wanna work here or not. Uh, and, uh, curriculum, anything beyond what we talked about?
No, math program is most of it.
Alright, and then, uh, the policy committee, anything beyond, uh, what we just, uh, approved?
Um, a couple of quick things, um, just noting that we are looking at, um, the evaluation, sponsorship and evaluation of co-curricular programs, um, is gonna be looked at over the summer. Um, Superintendent King had a, a policy, but it was pretty exhaustive, um, and in need of simplification. So that will be looked at, um, to ensure we continue to have good co-curriculars and they're being used, um, in, in meeting the, the goals and the needs of the students. Um, and in the medication area that we have, we will be adding, um, the school nurses being trained in and having, um, ability to administer nal- naloxone, um, more commonly known as Narcan, um, to anyone on school property, um, who might be, um, in need or appear to be suffering from an overdose, which is an, um, excellent community, uh, thing that we wanna keep an eye on. Um, there was talk about expanding that as well, but this would be a good first start to get, um, first step to have nurses at all of our schools comfortable with, um, and understanding its use in adminis- administering it, um, if needed. And that on the animal front, um, while we wanna keep the policy, it's not being, uh, it's difficult to enforce. We don't wanna see, um, our athletic directors, coaches and other folks coming to enjoy the game from the school to have to spend their time fighting with people or their dogs. Um, so again, please don't bring your dog. Um, but looking at getting some signage, um, at the entry points to the schools as well as the athletic fields and some communication and, uh, Superintendent King, would you like to say more about dogs?
I love dogs. I had a dog all my life. Chester was part of our family for thirteen years. Um, but, that being said, uh, we've ordered ten signs for the middle school and high school and they are quite large, so you can see them. And I think, um, some of the people said, well, gee whiz, we didn't know, and, and we didn't have good signage. So we think this has been big signs that people can see.
Good. Great. And that's it for us?
Questions on, any policy stuff?
Oh, sorry, I have to do one more. Um, revisiting, uh, there's some great conversation around, um, volunteerism, community service, um, graduation requirements, where would that go? Um, some thoughtful discussion on, uh, middle school, high school, our growing and expanded, um, I'm losing the word, advisory program that we have and where I might be a fit for that. Um, and a good conversation for admin over the summer and either revisiting that in the fall or determining who actually, that would be a best fit for. If it was, um, you know, part of curriculum or advisory, that wouldn't be a policy. So that was also a meaningful discussion.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions on that? Alright, uh, quick, uh, chair report. Um, first, just wanted to say that I, uh, attended graduation on Friday night and, uh, my commendations to, uh, the whole staff of the high school and, uh, our speakers, our, our valedictorians and salutatorians, our, uh, class president, I thought, uh, they all just really represented the district, uh, amazingly well. Uh, everything was well-run, it looked good, kids, uh, sounded super smart. Uh, you know, wish I had their public speaking skills at that age. Um, and, uh, you know, our valedictorians go out to Harvard. I don't know, uh, you know, I, I am not one to, uh, you know, spend too much love on the Ivy Leagues, but when your valedictorian goes to Harvard, it seems like, you know, you did something pretty good as a, as a school district. So, uh, congratulations, uh, to all the graduates and to the administration for just putting on a great event. Uh, it's one of my favorite days of the year and I really appreciated it. Um, and then second, as I just want to make sure, uh, everybody brings their calendars uh, to the next board meeting when we have a new board, as everybody remembers. Nobody on this board has the power to set a meeting for the future board. Um, so I'm, someone is going to need to figure out how we are going to, uh, meet over the summer. Are we just gonna come back in the fall? You know, what's our plan, uh, for the summer months? So I know everybody has vacations and camp and all that sort of stuff we need to work around. Uh, let's make sure that we all know the answers to that and we don't walk away saying, oh, I'll get back to you about camp plans, you know? Have a plan, uh, with your calendar, uh, at our next meeting. Uh, and I think that's it. Go ahead, Craig.
Uh, thank you, Sam. Just wanna echo what Sam said about, um, graduation. It's classy, it's, it's really, and, and you know you're doing something right or parents are doing something right. Someone's doing something right when, you know, both the valedictorian and the salutatorian, who have the stage all to themselves, spend all their time thanking other people for their success. I mean, that was.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, class act, I liked it. Um, and, uh, they're beginning to have the pre-K graduations and I swear to God, we should sell tickets to that. There's nothing more adorable than a pre-K graduation, I mean, it's great. Um, anyway, um, new hires, Michelle Hutchings, uh, food service cook and assistant to the manager at Dunn School. Antoine Walton III, shift custodian at the high school. Judy Ford, response to intervention at Tech Two for mathematics, one year only. Jack Hardeman, summer field and grounds maintenance facilities. Erica Bagir, special education at Tech Two at the Russell School. Melissa Cody, RTI math at Tech One at the Memorial School. Resignations, Cara Phillips, Ed Tech Two at the high school. Tracy Combs, math teacher at high school. Patrick Garvey, special education teacher at the high school. Bronson Stinnett, uh, English lang- art, English Language Arts and Social Studies teacher at the middle school. Rayanne Griffin, lead custodian at the high school. Carrie Bowman, speech and language pathologist at the Memorial School. A little asterisk on that one. Um, you hired her at the last board meeting for the upcoming school year.
Yeah.
And resigned afterwards, so.
We are not getting person from Utah after all.
No, we're not. Um, Andrea Norw- uh, transfer, Andrea Norwood has transferred from, uh, an Ed Tech Two at Russell School to the TLC Ed Tech Two program at Russell School for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That's it for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Craig. Uh, I think it's great that Jack Hardeman, one of our graduates and member of the golf team, is gonna be, uh, helping out with the fields and maintenance. He probably knows what he's talking about, that's, that's terrific. Uh, alright, next up is an executive session. Uh, we actually have two, uh, on the agenda. This was added, um, late in the, uh, agenda schedule and I apologize for that. It's a hundred percent an omission on my part, uh, that I just forgot that we needed, uh, to do this. Uh, Jason and I, uh, have been in communication and we needed to, uh, have this discussion, uh, to evaluate, uh, about the evaluation of the superintendent before the new board meets. Um, and so, uh, again, I apologize, I do not mean to put executive sessions on our agenda with no, uh, notice, so I can apologize that. But I have worked hard to get us into it, uh, before, too late. I could usually pontificate way more than I did tonight. So, um, can I hear a motion on entering an executive session?
I move that we enter into executive session regarding the evaluation of the superintendent as per one M R S A four oh five six A.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Alright, we're entering executive session at eight-ten on my, uh, laptop. Um, Craig, we are going to need you for the second one, so I'm sorry that you have to cool your heels for a little bit.
Maggie, do you need help?
I'm just gonna need a couple minutes, so eight-ten.
Yeah, we're not in a hurry, uh, can we take a bio break or actually?
Yeah, there's cases.
You can get a snack.
Yeah, I'll take some home.
Yeah, I'll take some home.
Five, yeah.
Oh, so do um wait, quick question on that.
Yeah.
Do we need to discuss that with Craig before we then vote on approving?
Yeah, so I was gonna come I was gonna bring us out and then go and then go into a new one and invite Craig in.
Perfect.
And then after that, we'll take one final vote and then off we go.
So.
Alright, so we're out at eight forty five. Uh and now can I hear? Yeah, we're on, so yeah, good, we're on for a second here. Um so uh can I hear a uh motion to enter into yet another executive session for a slightly different reason?
So what?
Let me read that off for me, Jason.
Yeah, I will. Oops. I move that we enter into executive session regarding the compensation of the superintendent as per one M R S A four oh five six A.
Alright, any discussion on that? All in favor? Alright, we are back in executive session at eight forty seven, oh actually.
I would like to invite in Craig Cane.
Yes. Alright, we're gonna come back out. Yeah, lights on, are we good? Alright, we're good. Alright, so uh we are back, we are out of executive session and uh I would hear a uh motion made from the personnel chair.
I move to increase the superintendent's compensation by the amount discussed in executive session.
Second. Alright, any further discussion on that? My only discussion is Craig, uh thank you for your your service this year, you've done a great job and uh we're gonna talk more about uh you know the evaluation or whatever um in a future meeting but all of us here might be the last time you see some of these people, they might move to Texas, who knows? Um just uh let me speak for the whole board and say that, you know, it's been a pleasure to work with you this year.
Well, thank you.
And uh you've done a really kick ass job, especially here in the spring where we've had a lot of things to deal with and uh I have appreciated your leadership.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Alright, uh I hear motion adjourned. Oh yeah, oh yeah, all in favor? Alright, thank you. Okay, thank you guys very much, thank you in the booth and uh we'll see you all next.